Planning Board meeting will now come to order. If I could have a roll call?
John Eichman.
Steve Caswell.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
Ed Miyoshi.
Great, if everybody would join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So our first order of business tonight is to welcome our new alternate, Ed Miyoshi, to the board. Thank you for joining us and being willing to work with us. We're really pleased to have you and welcome.
Thank you.
And if anybody hasn't had a chance to meet Ed yet, we'll make sure we do all the introductions this evening. And the next item on our agenda is our upcoming meeting dates. So we have two upcoming meetings, one on August 1st and one on August 15th. And then we have a series of minutes to approve. And Pam, I think we'll get through all of them tonight, finally. So the first one is March 21st. So Steve and John Cutler were not here. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Me.
Abstain.
Okay, so I've got Ed, Steve, and John abstaining. Perfect. Okay, the next ones are April 18th. I think all of us were here, except you, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 18th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
And I have, no, you were here, John.
Was that here?
Yeah, no, Jason was out. You were here.
Jason.
I'm sorry if I said that. And Ed abstains, thank you.
Okay, the next one is our minutes from the May 2nd meeting.
That was not easy to say. It looks like all of us were here, so do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Abstaining again, thank you, Ed. And next we have, we're almost done, we have May 16th. Looks like, again, all of us were here, so do I have, John, maybe except, I think you were not here for May 16th.
I don't think so.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the May 16th minutes?
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Me.
John Cutler and Ed are abstaining, thank you. And then our last group is June 20th, meeting of June 20th. And let's see, myself, Mike, Craig, Steve, and John Eichman were here. So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Aye.
We have two abstentions, John Cutler and Ed. Okay, great. So we're caught up?
Caught up, caught up.
Yes. All right.
Save of the moment.
There we go, all right. I apologize for letting that get so behind, folks. We won't, we won't let that happen again. Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is a decision for the Colley Lot Line realignment on Bertucci Lane. Are there any, any changes to the plan since the last time we saw it?
No changes to the plan.
Okay, any issues or concerns with regard to the plan? This was a fairly straightforward, you were realigning the lot lines. I'm sorry, Michelle, did you say?
I was just speaking with Pete that I incorporated his comments into the resolution.
Oh, good, okay. All right, so I, unless there's any comment or questions, I do have a negative declaration for this one. It was an unlisted action under Seeker, and we reviewed the long form, long form EIF for this one? Okay. And we did not make a determination of any significance for the following items: traffic, noise, or emission levels, endangered species, animal or plant or habitat of such species, any historic or archaeological resources, air, water quality, or ambient noise levels. We determine the application will not be subjected, will not subject neighboring or itself to unacceptable risk of flooding or major geological hazards, will have no substantial aesthetic effect. Again, this was just a lot line realignment, so no development planned or changes to the existing visual of the land. Not adversely affect surface water or groundwater, will not allow for improper uses within the specified zoning districts, not result in adverse cumulative impacts, nor adverse growth inducing impacts, and will not conflict with the town's comprehensive plan. So based on those determinations, after our review of the long form, we find no significant potential impacts were identified, so do I have a motion to approve the negative declaration?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And Ed, I think you've had a chance to review, or did you want to abstain?
I'll abstain because I missed most of the conversation about this.
That's fine. Okay, so Ed will abstain, and by motion, the negative declaration is approved for signature. And does someone want to offer the resolution?
Sure.
Okay, Mike?
Resolution of preliminary and final subdivision approval, the name of the subdivision, Lot Line Realignment for the Lands of Colley. Name of the applicant, should there be a name in here or not?
I'm sorry?
Should there be a name of the applicant? Do we need one?
It's Dean Colley.
Dean Colley, okay.
I'm sorry about that.
No, no, no problem. Location is 1999 Cross Road and 9 Bertucci Lane. Grid numbers, I won't read the grid numbers. Resolution offered by Planning Board member, Michael O'Brien. Whereas the applicant has applied for a lot line realignment to relocate four lot lines between three existing developed lots, lots A, B, and C located in the R3 zone, and whereas lot C is 1.55 acres and is a pre-existing non-conforming lot for lot area, whereas as shown on the lot line realignment plan for lands of Colley prepared by Gillespie and Stokos. Am I pronouncing your name?
All this time?
Yes.
All this time.
Okay, never mind. PLLC dated April 27, 2017, and last revised June 5, 2017. Lot lines will be dissolved and relocated to form three conforming lots. Whereas the acreage from lots A, B, and C will be added to lots, excuse me, A and B will be added to lot C to create a conforming 3.0 acre lot. Whereas the acreage of lot A will decrease from 61.5 acres to 59.95 acres, and the acreage of lot B will decrease from three acres to 3.1 acres, and the acreage of lot C will increase from 1.55 acres to 3.0 acres. Whereas the realignment will eliminate the lot area nonconformity of lot C, whereas no new additional lots will be created, and no new construction or disturbance is proposed on any of the lots. Whereas the action is considered to be an unlisted action under Seeker for which coordinated review was not undertaken, and whereas the planning board, after carefully reviewing all the submitted materials and documentation for the proposal, determined that the project would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and accordingly adopted a negative declaration on July 18, 2017. And whereas the planning board held public hearings on 6/20. And whereas the planning board finds that there are no other changes or approvals required between the preliminary and final plat, and the final approval can be granted simultaneously. And whereas the applicant has submitted an application for preliminary and final approval. Are we going to do any?
Just a second. We have no conditions, I don't think, do we require any conditions? It's pretty straightforward, it's a lot line realignment. There's, under the therefore, be it resolved, there's five little, you guys not have?
Okay, so we've moved the conditions, okay.
All right, so.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, keep, keep going until you're past that.
Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby issues preliminary and final subdivision approval for the above project as represented on a map entitled Lot Line Realignment Plan for Lands of Colley prepared by Gillespie and Stokos, PLLC dated April 27, 2017, and last reviewed June 5, 2017. IBM groundwater separate?
All right, that's the typo.
Okay. And last, okay, so it was, and last revised June 5, 2017.
Is there a period after that sentence, Michelle? Or is that the correct date?
That's the correct date, April 27.
Or is it the June 28?
June 28 is not tied to this.
No, it's revised through June 28.
Oh, so it is, okay.
It's dated April 27.
And last revised June 5, 2017, and revised through June 20, 2017?
No, no.
Oh.
Yeah, it is, it's, it was revised through June 28.
Do you have the June 5 date in there, or does the June 5 date not belong?
The June 5 date's out of there.
Oh, okay.
So it's dated April 27 and last revised.
And last revised.
Sorry, guys.
Through June 28, 2017. Be it further resolved that this approval is subject to the following conditions, which must be completed before the plan is signed by the planning board chair. One, the plat shall be subject to the approval of any easements or deeds by the town attorney. Two, a common driveway maintenance agreement with mets and bounds, description should be provided to the town attorney's office for approval. We recommend that the final plat include an inset detail of the common driveway easement with the mets and bounds. Three, the existing SDSs and well locations for lot B and C must be shown on the final plat to ensure that they are in each respective lot. Four, all terms of the negative declaration adopted herein show, do we want to, I mean?
We could probably get rid of that because.
I was going to say.
Yeah, there are no terms. There was no environmental impact identified.
Or we can, subject, five, subject, or four now, subject to the final approval of the zoning board for required area variances and existing structures.
Okay, so Michelle, I'd like to move the, whereas it's at the top of the second page, it says the planning board held public hearings on June 20th, move that up before we say we made a negative declaration, so just swap those two. Any, are you aware of the common driveway maintenance agreement requirement?
Yeah, surveyor's working on the descriptions as we speak.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Okay, any other changes, additions, comments, questions from board members or professionals? Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Be it further resolved that within five business days, the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second and by John, and votes as follows. Michael?
Aye.
John Cutler?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John Eichman?
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi?
Aye.
And myself, aye, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ed, just confirming for me, so you've had a chance to review the documents?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the discussion for the DePaulo site plan on Route 216. Is this the first time we're seeing this as a discussion item? I think you were in with a sketch plan, right? Or has it been in for discussion?
It was in for discussion, and then we went to ZBA. It was in for discussion, and then we forwarded on to ZBA.
Okay.
See how we made out there and then come back.
Gotcha, okay. So how did we make out there?
We went to ZBA, we went to public hearing stage, notified the neighbors. No neighbor showed up for the public hearing. There was one neighbor that did write in a letter against the project but didn't state any reasoning behind it. Other than that, the board didn't have any questions. We did add some screening because we knew that would be an issue along Route 216.
Okay.
We're going to show some staggered pines along the way with some deciduous trees behind it. We did take the planning board's recommendation on flipping the jog in the building from the rear to the front and do a dormer on the front, or a reverse gable on the front to kind of give the building some, some feel to it.
Okay.
In my packet that I submitted, we did a rendering. We've been in front of the ARB since we've been in front of both boards. The renderings that you see in this packet reflect those changes. We added some cupola, some more architectural details. The coloring of these renderings is a little bit off, more streamlined toward this, this color.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's more, more brownish than reddish as far?
Yeah, for some reason, the printer kind of tweaked the colors a little bit.
What the material is and the siding?
We're right now, we're doing either stick built or we're doing a metal frame on, from the inside, we don't know yet.
But the siding itself, is that?
Siding's going to be, siding's going to be vinyl, board and batten style, the applicant wants to go, we'll have to do recultured stone on the side.
So Brian, if these are really expensive automobiles, you know, the fewer windows it would seem, the better. I mean, this is a lot more aesthetically easier than I think the original proposals. Let me ask a question, I mean, are those windows going to be real? I mean, are they going to be?
The windows along the front, I believe, are going to be real, and the ones, for some reason, the rear has some windows in the back of the building. The applicant's going to do some type of a fake window in the back for more of a security purpose, but we have a little, there's obviously going to be security within that.
I was going to say, I would assume this is going to be, security is going to be a real priority.
Right, right. The building will have a security system on it, and the windows in the back, in the back will be blacked out, or a fake window.
So I think the last version of this, we saw the turning radius you provided showed the truck reversing back onto 216. It looks like there's updated drawings. Dave, have you had a chance to look at these? It allows.
We know, I, I'll get into that.
Okay.
In, in having conversations with the applicant as we learn more about how he does his business and how the business operates, when we're in front of his ZBA, obviously tractor trailer movement and deliveries and how he gets vehicles to the site was an issue. Majority of his deliveries, the three major ones are customers bring them to the site. He delivers them himself via pickup truck and enclosed trailer, or a flatbed pickup truck. That's where 95% of his business, 98% of his business comes from. He says occasionally, maybe once a year, twice a year, he'll get an interstate tractor trailer that will drop off a truck. And obviously, knowing that that's not a majority of his business delivery, we try to show a worst case scenario. Obviously, the site is not conducive to an 18-wheeler pulling into the site, and obviously backing into it off of Route 216 would be a little bit of a nightmare. So what he does right now is he basically meets the truck at the parking ride on 84. They do a quick unload there, it takes 10 minutes, and Healy to go down with his enclosed trailer and pick it up, or he'll have a flatbed meet him there, they'll pick it up, and they'll deliver it to the site. So if the board wants to, you know, we could explore, you know, tractor trailer entry, but what I tried to do in light of that is, within just this packet tonight, is show you two types of those major movements. Obviously, a car can get in and out of there with ease if they're just doing a personal delivery, but I tried to show an enclosed tractor, an enclosed trailer being pulled by a pickup truck into the site from both directions, and a flatbed truck. And those movements still can be made. It, you know, take you, I think with the flatbed coming toward the gas station, it probably takes four movements to make that swing in, but that's your worst case scenario.
But those four movements are onsite?
So it, it looks like if we can restrict the tractor trailers, I'd, I'll defer to you, Dave, to take a look at these. I know you're just getting them tonight just to take a look and make sure that they're acceptable, but it seems like they can keep the reverse and backing up off of 216, which I think is really what we were concerned about.
Yes, that, that is definitely a concern.
Can a fire truck get in and out without having a backup?
That I haven't looked into. Have you been before the fire?
Stop traffic if it was a fire truck, right?
I think the application was, we just, just made it to the fire advisory board. I believe we did make notation, I think they, if I remember correctly, was, wanted to know about the dumpster, knock box. I don't think fire access into the site was brought up in their letter.
The only comments that we, that the planning board have right now is a plan acceptable is shown, but you're right, they're probably where, you know, they have some standard things they require for all.
Yeah.
Commercial buildings.
And would have to be able to do that without entering the building, obviously.
From, from 216.
Brian, does this, I'm sorry, does this larger building have offices, or are the offices going to be over in the building that's now the garage?
There's going to be an office in the, in the 7,200 square foot building.
Larger building, okay. And the parking is along the, the south side?
Correct.
Okay. I'm assuming, since this is storage, there, there isn't a large number of employees?
There'd be one employee onsite, we give some hours of operation on the site plan, largely Monday through Friday. I think we have some hours on Saturday, but the weekends are basically will call. If they want to schedule delivery, the employee will meet them there, they'll do the exchange. But on the weekends, it's generally will call. We show two, we show two parking spots, obviously one will be for an employee, but when people come, you're obviously doing an exchange of a vehicle, so one vehicle will come out, one vehicle will go in. There's no intent to store vehicles overnight outside, everything's just inside.
Okay, so the parking is strictly for the employee and any visitor to the site, but not, no storage of vehicles if they're not in the building? Mike, you were going to ask them?
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, you know, I'm looking at this circulation thing, and it does look really kind of tight. I know it's worst case scenario, but I mean, you know, if this were like an 85 Matador, who cares? But if this is a Rolls Royce Silver Cloud, the potential for nicking this thing, you got to admit, is fairly high. I mean, what's the applicant saying about this, looking at this map and saying?
Believe it or not, we're actually expanding the pavement right now. You might be able to see within this, but the pavement line is probably being expanded 15 feet, 10, probably 10 to 18 feet more toward the north. And right now, he is able, he does store vehicles within that garage right now, and he does pull his trailer in there as it is, as tight as it is right now.
Okay, so it's, it's not going to be Nick City? Okay.
That's, I think that's why he gets paid the big bucks to store.
Brian, the concern here is, where you have the parking shown, doesn't the, the proposed truck, truck pattern impinge upon the parking?
You, when they have deliveries, I'm sure they can, if there's an employee spaced there, he can move in temporarily within the storage building. Again, we're not going to, it's not going to be a situation where you have a lot of people coming to the site that wants while deliveries happening.
And this, I'm assuming there would be notice ahead of time that?
Right, okay.
Did I intend to do any detailing, Brian?
No detailing, no car washing.
No detailing, okay.
So Brian, I think the last time we were looking at this, I know you've got the, you're pretty tight to the buffer here, but your garage is already in the buffer, and I think is, is part of that mode back there today? I mean, it's, I don't know, I think part of it's mode. Have you talked to the DEC at all about trying to move this building back, maybe, maybe so it's even with the garage and get it a little further off 216?
Yeah, that's, we had, you know, that was basically our, our first avenue of approach when we were in front of the ZBA board.
Okay.
Obviously, they're looking for any kind of relief that DEC could give so they could give less of a variance.
Okay.
So what we did is we were, we made a pre-application to the DEC, and I, there should be information on file with the ZBA office, I can give it to you too. We initially made contact, I believe, with DEC in the November, December. We finally got a pre-application meeting in February, and basically had five to six representatives from DEC in an office all saying, no, you can't come into our buffer, figure something else out.
Did you have somebody from the town there with you?
No, no, but I do have, in that correspond, in, in the packet that I did submit to the ZBA, there is a signing sheet with everybody's contact information, and I believe I forwarded all my correspondence via email between DEC and to the ZBA, and I can forward that to you.
Okay. Michelle, I know we've already got one building already partially in the buffer here, and I'm not sure whether the adjoining properties have similar conditions or not, but I'm, maybe if you can take a look at what the ZBA has for us?
That currently, the area that, a lot of the buffer area is already maintained lawn, so it's not really functional wetland buffer at this point. So we actually spoke with Brian about potentially approaching the DEC and seeing if they would consider granting a variance to allow the building to come back, because that would solve some of the visual, potential visual impacts and potential site circulation impacts, because it would give sure more room. So we are, I will probably be drafting that letter tomorrow, because we spoke with Brian, I think it was on Friday.
Okay.
And I'll be speaking with the town attorney and just making sure that what, what we're requesting is something that we can request, and, and hopefully they'll get back to us, and we'll have some information for the next time that you're on the agenda.
Okay.
And the only other thing I just wanted to add about this project is that, I just want to make sure that this is not a value judgment, it's just to make sure that the planning board understands that this is a, a building right now that has a very specific use. There's very little parking that is on the site right now, two spaces. So I just want you to think carefully about if, in the event that this business at some point doesn't exist anymore 20 years from now, what we can do in this building is relatively limited without parking, okay? And what type of use would potentially, because we do have, I'll give you an example, buildings like this throughout town which are very, very difficult to rent.
Okay.
For example, the one where there was going to, he was asking to put a small flea market in. So that's just something to consider when, when weighing, you know, how, if, if you want to add any additional conditions, or, or how you want to handle the conditions for the, for the approval if you decide to approve.
So I guess the, my first comment is, assuming that the building could be moved back to be maybe parallel or even a little bit behind where the current garage is, again, knowing that this is already kind of mowed area and not, I'll call it not effective buffer, and that this use is a fairly benign use as far as, you know, impact to wetlands. Wouldn't we think, though, if the building was able to be moved back 20 or 30 feet, you'd be able to put parking in front of it?
Correct.
Or something like that?
I think.
So it seems like it would be a much more usable site, and I'm not suggesting there won't be this current use for a very long time, but it would become a more usable site if it had more.
For the future.
Correct. I mean, I think, I think a lot of.
Even if it was a grass lawn in the front, I mean, you'd have an option.
Yes, absolutely. So I think, I mean, I, I think that's one of the things to weigh.
Okay.
When we hear back from the DEC about whether or not they're going to allow the incursion into the buffer.
You know, on that point, per Brian's comment that this, four months ago, this was already tried, and they didn't get even to, you know, to first base with this.
Well, the only thing I'll say about that is that DEC typically will never say to you, if they've got a new project coming in, yeah, sure, go ahead and go into the buffer. It's, they're, they're, because their whole point in existing is to prevent disturbance in wetlands, so it's almost like they have to take that stand, and because they obviously allow incursions into the buffer all the time for different types of development, and for existing development, there's a lot of incursions to buffer. So clearly, their stance is going to be.
It was a specific permitting process. I don't want to make it sound like the DEC is just going.
No, 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 because in this, in this case, they believe that you could move the building forward and avoid the disturbance altogether, but what we're going to say to them is, yes, you can, but that makes it a very unusable site.
Right.
So I think weighing those, I think they don't necessarily have all the information that they need to have, but ultimately, yes, we still need to get their approval.
Right, and obviously, we could point out the fact that this, you know, while, while we two believe in preserving wetlands, this happens to be mowed, so it's not like, you know.
Infringing.
But the point I was going to make is, is Michelle, is, you know, given the, the fact that this has already been going around for four months, how long do you think it'll be before we get some kind of an assessment? And can the town bring any pressure to bear to at least get an initial indication that says, are we willing to consider that or not?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, we can call them.
They're pretty quick.
You know, sometimes they're pretty quick. On our project across the street, they were not quick at all. But yes, we can certainly call them and, and, you know, try to get the information from as quickly as possible, and we will do that.
Brian, any objection to us following up with the DEC and having Michelle reach out?
I mean, as long, as long as we can keep on them, if this, if we're going on a month and a half with no response.
I think it's worth the question.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if we could move the, if, if the site can be more user conducive, you know, for future.
So that's my next question. Did you ever look at a layout that would move the building back? Do you still have the truck turns, or would you need to put like two driveways in so they can pull in forwards and out forwards, or?
It didn't get to that point just because we had such a hard no with DEC going into their buffer. I mean, I literally had six people in the rooms.
Okay.
When you bring a car in, do you actually start the thing up and never drive it, or does it literally come off and go directly into a, like a conveyor belt or something and go up into storage? Or do you guys actually drive these things around on the site?
With the heat, one that went, for deliveries, they typically come off the truck, they idle for a little bit, and then you pull them in. He will occasionally run them around for the clients, but run them on, obviously, a salt-free day in the winter, but he'll, will drive them a couple miles down the road, let them warm up, and then bring them back.
Okay, so, so it's, it's not like they actually have to back up into the building? Because, because honestly, by pushing it back, I was thinking, even just a pull-off that kind of says you could take the cars off the back, right? You know, would be greatly simplify the whole thing.
Yeah, you need to be able to do that. You could actually do almost a, you know, I'll call it a circular elongated drive or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, the, the configuration possibilities open up if we can gain.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. I think it's worth the conversation. Let's, let's just give it one, one shot with the town's kind of, you know, support of trying to make it a more usable site. Is there any, any other questions or comments from board members that we have for Brian for, at this point? for, at this point?
I was gonna ask him.
Okay. Michelle, do you think we could put this, and, Brian, I know this is summertime, so if, if August 1st wouldn't work, but I'm thinking we could put it back on for a follow-up discussion August 1st, and just see where we, if we've gotten a hold of the DEC and...
I will have at least had a conversation with them to get a sense of where they're...
Okay. Okay. Because I, I think, you know, we're done with ARB, we're, we're done. Oh, and I'm sorry, Pam shared with me, I'm, we had a comment note up here that the fire advisory boards had planned acceptable, and they do, but they have their standard requirements. Dry pipe sprinkler system with fire department connection, monitored alarm system, MSDS to be provided by the fire department, Knox box installation, and the dumpster, which is not positioned on the map, must be at least 35 feet from the building or in a fireproof enclosure. Are you gonna have a dumpster on site?
This is such a low, low refuse generator, if anything, it'd be one residential container out front.
Okay. Okay, so there are no dumpster, okay. So I think, again, you probably have a couple of notes you'll add to the plan, but other than that, there's no, no specific things. All right, anything else, Michelle? Pete, anything, I see there's a drainage, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I had a couple of things.
Okay.
Brian, there's, it looks like there's an existing trench drain in front of the garage.
Yes.
Then there's a pipe, there's a four-inch PVC pipe that goes on the, the neighbor's property.
Right, there's a ditch line that runs right between the two projects right there.
Is that existing, or?
It's existing.
Do you need that, the trench drain, or?
You know, there's a low point in that driveway, we could probably take a look at, maybe trying to see if we can reconfigure that somewhere.
Are you repaving the driveway?
The pavement in front of the garage is relatively new. If anything, we just do a patch, adding on to what's there now.
All right. What about other septic? Is that, you have to, you have to work with the health department on that?
Yeah, we'll have to work with the health department on that.
Is that, is that, well, I assume, well, I would hope it must be a type of system that can be under, you know, pavement, because it's under there now, right?
Yeah, it would be an infiltrator setup. I mean, it'd be similar to if you're putting a poolhouse in, it's just, you know, a sink and a bathroom.
Yeah.
Small tank and a row of infiltrators.
All right, so you propose, you're proposing a new well, so you have to, you have to go to them anyways, right?
Right.
Okay. And then, at some point, you'll, I mean, depending on where, you know, the building, building ends up, you'll, you'll add some erosion control and, you know, still...
Yeah, wherever, I think we, in our plans that we submitted, you know, just the intent to show phasing and construction.
Yeah, it's just basic right now until, until the, you know, the site plan gets set. Okay. How's that on my end?
Anything with the drainage on the north side? Oh.
On the north side?
Is it just a small basin? Is it a dry basin? I don't, I can't...
Well, it looks like it's just, I mean, it looks like, Brian, you're proposing that just as an infiltration area for the roof leaders? Is that right?
Yeah, just a small infiltration area. I mean, we're under an acre in disturbance, so it's just basically something to treat roof runoff.
Are you gonna stay under an acre if the building moves back?
We're, we're still gonna be under that threshold.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So Michelle will reach out to the DEC. If need be, we can put a restriction for tractor-trailers. We'll see if the building can be moved back to the DEC, and you want a phasing and construction plan? Or Pete, do you have a phasing and construction? We just haven't reviewed it yet, because we aren't settled on where the building is.
I think there was some basic, you know, details on here, but, yeah, there was some basic stuff, but I think you have to do a little more, right, on?
Yeah, we'll get more into construction phasing.
Yeah.
Once we figure out what we're doing.
Okay.
It's early, yeah.
So we'll move you to August 1st, if that's all right. We'll reach out to the DEC. Depending on the feedback Michelle gets, we'll know where we think the building will settle, and then I think your plan is probably ready to move forward.
Okay.
All right. Excellent.
Thanks.
Any other questions for, no, we're good? The next item on our agenda is a minor modification to a site plan for Foster, Foster Road Professional Building.
Hi, I'm here to represent Dr. Sinha at 45 Foster Road. He wants to add a second generator to his space. He has two buildings there. The first one had a smaller size, a 25 kilowatt generator. This one is going to be a larger generator, because this is his main office, and he would like to have the possibility of power when we have, you know, outages and so on.
Okay.
So...
And this is a typical system? They test it like once a week, and he would only kick on in the event of some type of power failure?
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay. Pam, do we have that? Yeah, thank you. We just have the map I think you provided for. Is anyone gonna get a chance to look at this? I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
I...
Yeah. So this is going...
It's in the back of the building, along the fence. The fence that separates the office from the residential home that is behind.
Okay. This...
By the way, I thought you did a nice job with the first one, and it's very well, you know, landscaped, I just...
Thank you, thank you. This one can't be seen from the road. It's really hidden in the back of the building, and from the parking area, you may be able to see some, something of it, but really...
You haven't had any complaints or anything for the first one?
Nothing, nothing.
And would these be on the same schedule for the tests?
Correct. Every Tuesday, I think, they, they test it, so this one will be on the same schedule.
Okay. And is this, bear with me, I'm sorry, I'm just grabbing your application. In terms of how far it is from the building, it just seems like it's a little bit far from the building. Is it, is there a reason it's kind of sitting in the middle there, or closer to the fence versus closer to the building?
Only because the staff uses that pathway to go behind the buildings, and they have, you know, they, they walk behind the buildings to go to the parking lot and whatever else they have to do. So that's why we shifted...
So they're gonna walk between the generator and the building versus between the generator and the fence?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Normally, I think I'd be concerned that it was so far from the building, but this is pretty well-hidden. I'm, Michelle, I know we had talked about possible screening, is it necessary? This seems like an unusual situation where you might not need screening, because it's...
I think the only time you may need screening is, is in the event the lots, when the lots become combined and other stuff happens on the other lot, then they may need to consider screening. But currently, right now, it's not obvious, and there's a fence already that screens it from the residential lot behind it, which is already owned by Dr. Sinha. So I think at a later date, when they come in potentially to redevelop that site, then we can look at potential screening.
But then we would be able to, if there's a move, to me, okay?
Correct.
So then, I guess the only other question I have, and it's just, it'll be on a, it'll be on a concrete pad?
Correct.
And I'm assuming the wiring from the generator to the building is gonna be underground?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Okay. Is there any, I'm assuming there's no issue with walking, having a walking path that's crossing over that? I mean, it's gotta be insulated and everything. Is there anything we need to consider as far as that goes? I don't know, Scott, I'm looking, I don't know if the building department has requirements for that, but...
Yeah, I don't think so.
I'm just used to seeing them a lot closer to the building, where you wouldn't have a lot of foot traffic.
Is it natural gas, or?
It's natural gas, yes.
And gas is already at that point?
No, no, it's, no, it's not natural gas. He has propane, actually, yeah.
Where's the tank going?
It'll go next to the, the generator, just like in the other one, we had it right next to it.
Okay.
So that's where it would go.
So either way, you'd have to deal with a propane tank, so maybe it makes sense to keep them together, I don't know.
Yeah.
Any issues, Scott, or you?
No, I don't have any.
Okay.
I'm sure the wiring would be sleeved, I can't do it or something, I'm sure they won't, they won't just leave it under, under, you know, the ground without sleeving it or doing so, you know?
I just didn't know if we needed, if we were making a motion, if we need to say it's gotta be buried a certain number of inches underground or anything like that. I'm sure that whoever's installing it will know what to do. I didn't know if there was anything Scott would ask us to include.
Yeah, that'd be part of their, their building permit. Their, their electrical permit, that'd be part of that.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Does anybody need to see the map? Any questions or comments from board members? Did anybody get a chance to see it already? Okay. Okay. Any questions or comments from our professionals? Any concerns? Michelle, this is a fairly minor change to a very large site. Is there any reason for us to hold discussion or anything, or can we do this as a minor motion?
I would do it as a motion, like you did the previous one.
Okay. So if there are no other questions, do I have a motion to approve the, as shown on the map and with the information provided by the applicant?
So move.
A second?
A motion to approve the generator at the Foster Road site. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And I think you've had a chance to review the application, so, great. The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the referral from the town board. Michelle, I think you've drafted a letter for us on the Stanley property rezoning request on Hosker Mountain Road.
Yes, so if you remember last meeting, we discussed the Leonard Stanley parcel and the potential rezon from a B1 to an R1. And we discussed several reasons for this, and one is that the existing surrounding uses are consistent with R1 zoning. And actually, let me step back a second. The reason this was before us was because there was a violation issued for the property, because the property owner was storing commercial vehicles on site, and found out that he was no, not able to do that. So when he looked into what he could do with the site, it was very limited because of the fact that it's right on the Taconic, and there's a 100-foot buffer, and doing anything that's visible from the Taconic leads to problems with SHIPA or the Historic Preservation Office. So I think he determined that residential use would be the best use for the property, and if you recollect, the gentleman that was in here for the warehouse storage and the flea market, he's also right, right across the street from this parcel, and as we know, he's had a lot of difficulty in renting that site out for any sort of commercial use whatsoever. And then the other uses around it, although they are, some are B1, they're all used for residential purposes. So in many ways, it makes sense to, to consider this for a residential use. And I did also list four parcels surrounding this parcel that were B1, but the town board may want to consider also rezoning to R1, just because they're either used as a residential already, property already, or...
That area is more conducive to a residential zone, especially with the changes in the Taconic.
Correct. So I, I drafted what I thought were reflective of your comments. If you have any changes, let me know, and then what we'll do is we'll provide this to the town board with our recommendations, and then the town board will consider it at their next meeting.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments from Michelle on the letter right now?
And, and you can also provide comments to me in the next couple of days if you want. I can wait till Friday to give this to the town board if you want.
And I'm sorry if you mentioned it, Michelle, but I know we had talked last time about making sure this was an actual buildable lot if it became residential.
Correct, and, and we've determined that it is an actual buildable lot. Brian came in showing, and, and the only issue that came up at that point was that the septic was placed somewhat in the 100-foot buffer for the Taconic. And it's not a, it's not a structure, because it's below ground technically, so that's allowed, but we asked if there was any way he could move it, and I, you were gonna check on that, I don't know if you were able to move it at all. He, he said that the location was chosen in part because the topography was better there. So I don't know if you have any update on that, Brian, or are you able to look at that at all?
We, we took a brief look at it. We wanted to see, we wanted to see if this, this application actually got any legs underneath it before we got to that next level. But, you know, there are recent health department changes and, and septic sizing that do allow smaller systems, so we will try to move it out of that area if we can.
But in general, you can cite a house on the site, meet the setbacks, and knowing even with that Taconic state buffer, that's good.
I do, one is, Michelle, we talked about this, is the third and the fourth bullets kind of allude to the fact that we've created a, a lot that really can't be used for anything. So if we could just call that right out and say...
Sure.
We have created a lot.
I'll put that more definitively in there.
And then two, if we could get these things more in advance, because if this really was drafted on the 10th, you know, just going out and just...
Yeah, that's probably, that's probably on me, Mike. I think I didn't return it back to Michelle and say, "Sorry about that."
So I guess my ire...
Absolutely, bring it on.
Never mind. Okay, but, no, that...
But, but I think, Michelle, if the board wants to take a couple of days just to be able to read through to Mike's point and think about it, if there's any additional comments that you have, or questions?
I admit, this, this is a rather short letter, but I mean, you know, particularly in the way, you know, our past recommendations to the town board have been, you know, four or five pages, and it's...
Okay. I, I like that we're looking at the other lots in the area. I, you know, I, I think we'd like to have buildable lots and usable lots, so, and I do agree, there's been some difficulty in this area, especially with trying to have a commercial use there, so that seems like it makes sense. Do you have questions for us?
I'm deciding you better myself.
Okay. So we'll, we'll finalize the letter with Michelle. Please get back to her with any questions or comments that you have, just within the next couple of days, and then we'll send the recommendation over to the town board. It's a town board action, so they'll consider it from there.
Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Kelly House Community Services on Route 216 in Stormville. That was not yours, Brian? Okay. Do we have anybody here for Kelly House? Keely House? Kelly House?
I can just tell you really quickly what it wa, what it is. Another one that came in as a violation.
Okay.
It's located at the intersection of Route 216 and old Route 52.
Yep.
It was an old, a commercial building, and what happened was an organization called the Kelly House moved in and occupied the building, but they didn't get a change of use or an occupancy permit to do so with the building department, so they kind of just went in. They didn't change any of the outside, but they changed the inside with no permit. So they were brought before the, the building department, and the building department sent building department sent them upstairs to the planning office because really it was a change of use from what had previously been there, which was a general store. So we needed to kind of look to make sure they had the right, the appropriate parking and, and Department of Health approvals for the, the use that was in there.
So I saw that they had offices as the current use, is that the correct description and is that what we use for, it seems like it was a similar use to Taconic innovation.
It is a similar use, it's, it's like a day program, day habilitative program, so folks come in and learn, learn skills, um, people that are, are disabled learn skills and, um, and then they go home in the evening, so it's, it's literally I think like nine to five type hours. And then there's also caseworkers that actually go out to households in the surrounding area
Provide support.
And they come in and they just do their paperwork in that office, that, like, any of the paperwork, they have to document their site visit. And I think it's a, it's a relatively small number of clients, I think he said they could have potentially up to 12, I think they don't have anywhere near that right now.
Are they there all day? I mean, do they come in and they're there for the day?
They're, they're all day and they're, and they don't drive, they're either driven to the site or, um, I, I think there's, he said he has a small van where they go and pick up. So, um, we, I did contact the Department of Health, um, and he also contacted the Department of Health, they provided us with a letter saying that the septic system is sufficient for the, the use on the site and, um, I have that letter in, in the file. And the only other issue is that, um, the former general store sign is out front and it's boarded up because it was a vacant building for a while, so it does still give the appearance that it's somewhat of a vacant site with a really active parking lot. So, um, we were gonna request that or maybe give him some, a timeframe to remove that sign, I think they will eventually want to put a Kelly House sign up, but I believe that funds are, funding is an issue for this organization because it's a nonprofit. So, um, so anyway, that, that was the one thing that we just noted, that perhaps they could either get, take the sign down completely or put up their sign.
We have a couple, sorry, Mike, go ahead.
I, I went out there and, you're right, the sign does look kind of hideous. How long ago was that, a general store? It looks like it's a fairly new building.
It is, but it was years ago.
It was like, and it was a...
When the building was built, it, the business was in place for a very short time.
Okay.
Didn't make it and it's been empty for some time before this organization moved in.
And, and was like the, the, the store, the gas station right across the street from it in operation too? I mean, were they...
Yes, so they were competing and...
So it wasn't like one was a predecessor to the other, okay? I just, wasn't...
The one with the gas station's been there for quite a long time.
The gas station, right, this one came along, tried to compete and was not successful. So now they've moved on to a different use for the building.
So Michelle, we have a comment from the fire advisory board and I'm, I'm not sure when it's a change of use versus a site plan, um, they're saying they reviewed the plan